So, thank you so much for joining us this evening. We're super excited to have you all with us. As I was mentioning as some of you were coming on, we had a decent number of people register for the meeting. And I know a lot of people are looking forward to the recording of this. So I wanted to make sure we get that started. You know, today, we're going to be talking about how to connect with school board members, specifically around COVID issues, COVID safety, COVID protocols within schools. But when we get into the physical how to to have those meaningful conversations, I want you all to keep in mind that this can be used in a variety of settings. It does not have to be COVID specific things that you're using these tips and tricks on. If you have other issues that you want to be having meaningful conversations about with elected officials, these are very versatile tips and tricks. So I want to make sure you all keep that in mind as we move forward with this. Okay, so I set a few goals for tonight. This slide is in place of of an agenda. So I want to make sure that everyone is aware of what we want to accomplish for the evening. And that is evaluating the vaccination rates in Lake County. We will go over briefly of what we're currently looking at in terms of action vaccination rates, exploring current COVID protocols for school corporations. That is such a hot topic right now. Reviewing the general responsibilities of a school board member. I think it's very important to keep in mind, since these individuals are the ones currently making these decisions for the schools in terms of opening back up and the protocols and safety, it's important to know what their general responsibilities are in a whole. Learn about the Indiana Senate Bill 5. That's very, very important. And I don't think a lot of people are talking about it right now. So we need to make sure everyone's aware of that. Identifying which other local leaders should be contacted in addition to those school board members when talking about COVID safety in schools and also the community. And then we also want to talk how you can effectively talk to elected officials and have those meaningful conversations. And then after all of that, I'm really hoping there's time that we can turn off that PowerPoint and just have those open conversations. I know a lot of you already know each other. But if there's any connections that we can be making, networking, sharing of ideas and thoughts, I want to make sure that we have time to do that also. Very quickly for housekeeping, we don't want you to be shy during this PowerPoint. Like I already said, I think we primarily all know each other for the most part. If you have a question, go ahead, blurt it out. If you want to raise your hand and be polite, go ahead and do that. And I'll call on you. If you don't want to talk today, you're welcome to use the chat box. I will be monitoring that. And I can ask the question and we can answer it for you. And as I already mentioned, that this webinar is being recorded. But we want this to be a very open and relaxed webinar. I actually don't like the term webinar, but conversation. So so let's get started. So if you don't know who we are, my name's Miranda Enquist. I am Legacy Foundation's Community Engagement Coordinator. I do a lot of the backend work for Rise, a lot of the social media, the the program materials, flyers, brochures, things like that. And then everyone knows Sarah. She's the founder of Rise. And then she also works at the Lake County Election Office. Sarah, I don't know if you want to say anything about yourself?
Sure, I will really quickly. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. As we mentioned, we had a good number of people that are interested in the recording. So we're glad you're all here in person, hoping to get to that party discussion. So we will, as long, I know these slides are going to be in depth, but we're really trying to hear from all of you at the end, too. So I'm Sarah Ferraro. I am from Crown Point, which is in South Lake County. But I'm originally an educator. So not only is this topic tonight, this topic tonight is near and dear to my heart because of, you know, having family members still in the classroom. And just, this is just a very passionate topic right now and very important. So yes, Rise has been around. If you are new to us, I don't think many people on this call might be new. But just for the reporting purpose, we've been around since 2017, 2018, started under some civic engagement outreach workshops that were free to the public. And then we were able to get a large grant. And we're here housed as a program in the Legacy Foundation, which is Lake County's community foundation. So we've done a lot of things in our time, including helping people run for office, including helping people run for school board. So that is something that's been at the core of what we've done. Last year, obviously, was an interesting year with having to do a lot of virtual events. And we're still doing like today's event, virtual. So we've hosted a number of things and we hope that we can be here for you now and in the future to build whatever you need with strengthening civic engagement in your community. That's kind of what we're all about. If you have a question, we will help you find the answer and we will help something that you think your community needs. And but yeah, I'm sure you've all followed us. And the next slide is going to talk about our social media. So if you're not already on our social media, that's a great place to learn more about what we're doing.
Yes, absolutely. I believe most of you probably follow us already. But if you don't, please be sure to do so. Sarah already mentioned a lot about the program. But we are housed within the Legacy Foundation. And our primary focus is civic engagement, voter education, and obviously, that advocacy training piece. We highly, highly, highly rely on volunteers. We have our wonderful volunteers. And I cannot thank them enough for everything that they do for their communities. And one of the things that I always really love to stress about Rise is that we are very moldable to what the needs, oops, what the needs are for the community that we're specifically going into for a specific event or program, even down to the year, you know, with this year not being an election year, not focusing on voter education as much, but more so focusing on vaccine outreach. And so that has been the focus of our year for the most part. And we've been working on canvassing efforts specifically in East Chicago. And we will be starting in Hammond hopefully very soon. Working with a number of community events, tabling opportunities. You know, just last month or this month, August is still going on. Just this month, we've connected with over 5,000 families at a variety of tabling events. We did, I want to say probably 10 to 12 different back to school events. And we were wherever we're, we're welcome, really. And we've been having those meaningful conversations, those one on one conversations with individuals. And that's really what what that next step really is, I feel like. You know, we've done the mass campaigning. We've done the digital outreach, which we're still doing. But it's really taking those one on one individual, more unique conversations. And with that, I do invite you to join us. I will be dropping a link into the chat shortly with a quick Google form. If you are interested in joining us, whether it's attending an event or canvassing in your community or one of the other communities that we're currently in, we can help you. We provide scripts. We provide all of the materials you need. And we can package it as as what is fit for you and to make you a very successful outreach person in your community. So with that, I'm going to pass it along to Sarah. We want to quickly, I know we started a few minutes late, but we want to quickly go through getting to know each of you. So everyone knows who is on the screen. And while Sarah starts this, I'm going to drop that volunteer link in the chats.
Thank you, Miranda. And I'm just glad you're taking over. Elizabeth says she cannot hear anything. So I don't know if that's something that you can fix on your end or if you see a glitch. But yes, please do consider if you're not from Lake County, don't worry that some of the data and things we might mention tonight are about Lake County. This can be, what we've been doing can be molded anywhere in the state. And along with a lot of the things that we've done with running for office or voter engagement can be happening anywhere. So if you need something from us, please ask. And we are happy to, I'm always in Porter County. So if you need something in Porter County, just ask and I'll come out there, too. Yeah, so we're going to quickly get to know who you are. Hopefully, kind of quickly, because we'd like to get to chatting at the end. And I'll just call on you. And then if you don't want to answer some of these questions, that's totally fine. If you're not sure at this point, or if you're just here to get some information, you know, just feel free to answer what you'd like. So I'll go first. My name is Sarah. I'm from Crown Point, which is in South Lake County. My goal is to help all of you and bring this information to all of you and hope that you'll join us in volunteering, but also learn from all of you. That's really important to us with Rise, that we're learning new things all the time. Yes, I will tell you that I have contacted school board members in the past recent months and elected officials on a pretty daily basis. So I'm sure that I can learn more from everyone else here. So we'll just go quickly. I think do we people need to be unmuted, Miranda, to talk or?
They should have the ability to unmute themselves.
Okay. So I see Daria. Daria, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, do you see me? No, yeah. Okay, hi. I'm a Gary teacher, elementary music. I live in Shererville and I have been teaching Gary for 20 years. I'm very concerned about the very lax COVID protocol that is in place right now. We do have a mask mandate, but that is, it depends who your administrator is as to how effectively that is applied. We have had no communication about COVID cases in the building or in the district. And that is very concerning because I do know from my second grade teachers that there is COVID in the building. Gary is not testing for COVID. And it's it's extremely frustrating and infuriating, as you can imagine, that this is just, they have a very laissez faire attitude when, when, you know, COVID is in the building. So that's where, that's why I'm here.
Thank you for being here, Daria. I see Councilman Robert Cotton. Want to introduce yourself, Councilman?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not visible. Hopefully, I'm not visible because I'm trying to stay cool. And actually, I'm watering plants in the interim. So, I mean, while I'm listening in. But I'm a city, I'm a city councilman in Valparaiso, Indiana. And I share the concerns that have been, that have been stated with regard to lax mitigation. I do roam the schools, serving in the capacity of a substitute teacher. And, you know, I see it's gotten to the point where, you know, people who do choose to wear masks, it seems as though there's a certain amount of pressure, the cultural bend towards not having masks, you know. I mean, I think kids who have them in their pocket because they're required to wear them on the bus, aren't wearing them in class when they're very close to each other. And so I've been actually a bit outspoken and, 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 and it's a consequence spoken to by principals about mentioning masks, you know. So anyway, we introduced, I took it upon myself to ask, being that we have an appointed board. I'm sorry, I'm giving you way too much information. I'm a city councilman of Valparaiso and I'm all about trying to find out whatever I can from you tonight. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we'll go to Linda, Linda Aguiano.
Hi, I'm just here to get information. I am a former teacher and I just really care about kids. And if Rise volunteers, I'm usually interested in finding out more what that is.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, and I see Bryce on my screen next.
Hello, Bryce Gustafson. I am a program organizer with the Citizens Action Coalition. And I am here to listen and offer any kind of anything I can. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for being here, Bryce. And thanks for supporting us all the way from Indianapolis and all you do. Next, I see Aubrey.
Hello. It's because, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Aubrey. I live in Crown Point. I'm an ICU nurse. I don't have any kids, but like, I just feel like really frustrated. Oh, my God, I'm not going to start crying, really. I'm just really frustrated at like the situation with the children. I have a lot of kids in my family that I care about and I just want them to be safe at school. So that's kind of why I'm motivated to talk up, like speak up and try to see how I can do that to maybe help raise awareness or help make it so that it gets done. Because I really feel like, I feel like masks are very important and especially for children that are under 12 and can't be vaccinated. That's like literally like the biggest thing that they have to keep them safe. But yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you for being here, Aubrey.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Next, we'll go to Kristen McMurtry.
Hi, Miranda. Hi, Sarah. Hello, everyone. I'm Kristen McMurtry and I'm here on behalf of the Northwest Indiana Coalition for Public Education. And additionally, I am the parent of a high school student at Valparaiso High School.
Thank you, Kristen. Let's see, next on my screen, I have Chris Papillo. Chris, are you there?
Yes, hello, everyone. Miranda, Sarah, thank you for putting this together. My name's Christopher Papillo. I'm from Valparaiso. I'm the proud son of two retired teachers and the proud father of two current teachers. My goal is to see what kind of tools I might pick up from you all. Because living in Valparaiso, we are unfortunately one of just a small handful of districts in the state that has an unaccountable, unelected, meaning appointed, school board. And having sparred with them for years, we're currently engaged once again over this COVID issue. So the answer is yes, have contacted the school board, plan on contacting them again and, and have a pretty active behind the scenes campaign that's currently being coordinated with a number of groups here in Velpo. So hoping we can learn something from you all, even though our worlds are very different having an unelected school board, I'm still hoping there's much that I can learn from you tonight.
Thank you for being here. Let's see, maybe out of order. I see Emily, Emily Hunt. Do you want to introduce yourself? There you go.
Hey, yeah, hey, Sarah. My name's Emily Hunt. I am a parent of a fourth grader in Valparaiso. If you can even probably hear my, my four year old in the background. Okay, we got to be quiet. So I, I'm just joining for the purpose of, you know, I like many of the others here are super concerned about the kids, specifically the elementary kids who are unvaccinated. And, and as Chris pointed out, our, our board here in Velpo has been pretty unresponsive. So I'm looking for tips on how to effectively communicate with them and, and any ways to compel a response from them. And, and I guess in the absence, the absence of that, how to hold these board members accountable for what at this point I think is, is a pretty gross violation of their duties and willful mismanagement of the school corporation. Okay, I'm going to mute myself before there's more screams.
Thank you. So Elizabeth, are you there? Can you hear us? Yeah.
I can hear you now. I can hear you now. Thank you. Finally got in. Glad to be here. Glad to be here. Thank you.
All right. I will go to, Elizabeth has been canvassing for us in East Chicago. And she's one of our main folks in East Chicago and just phenomenal work that she's been helping us build connections there. I see Levon, is it Levon Carson?
Yes, it is.
Hi.
Hi, and I'm, I'm driving, so I'm, I'm listening mostly.
Okay.
So I am, I live in Miraville, but I pastor church in Hammond. I'm a former educator, but I'm just really interested on how I can better serve my schools that's in my community neighborhood and really understanding the function that the board plays so that I could better understand on how to, you know, what, what I can do to help, you know, facilitate whatever services that we can offer to help our, our kids in our schools.
Thank you for being here. It's nice to meet you. I think our last person, I was trying to scroll through and see if I missed anyone, is Roberta, Roberta Black.
Hello, everyone. Yes, my name is Roberta Black. Thanks for having me. I've been enjoying myself thus far, receiving great information. I currently live in Miraville, Indiana, and I do have an 11th grader. And he's told me, even though he is vaccinated, which I made sure he was vaccinated before he went back because I knew that there would be so much interaction with a lot of students returning. He's told me how, you know, based on them being out of school and what we've taught them, you know, six feet separation. He just kind of feel like the schools are overcrowded, the hallways are crowded, the lunchrooms are overcrowded. And that's just based on, you know, for the past year and a half, it's kind of been like, stay six feet, wear your mask. They are wearing their mask, which is very, very good. But I am here actually to get information as well as to give information. I own a cleaning service in Miraville, Indiana. And we will be hosting a teacher appreciation back to school giveaway to give away essential cleaning products and masks just to help the teachers out, make them feel a little bit comfortable. If you guys can pass the word along. And this is all along with the Clean Lifestyle Campaign, where we're hoping that we can reach out to one school a month, giving them some cleaning supplies for, you know, selected teachers. We may can't get the entire building because this is going to be operated through a GoFundMe account, which I can actually provide both links in the chat. So we're very excited about this, just to help with giving information. Because like I've heard other individuals on here saying, like, you know, of course, we did want our children to go back to school. They need to be there, they need to interact. But the younger children aren't vaccinated. You know, what do they have set up like health class to constantly give continuous information to the staff, to the students, to the parents, so that everyone can feel a little bit safer? Thanks, I hope I didn't take up too much time.
Welcome, Roberta. Thank you so much. Yes, anything you would like to share in the chat, that's wonderful. And hopefully, we can pick up some links or if you have a flyer and we're happy to share it in our networks that we have as well. So that's great. Thank you. With us. I think, Miranda, did I get everybody?
I believe so. So moving on. You know, like I mentioned before, our focus for the year is vaccines. So it would not be proper of us to not provide the current vaccination rates for Lake County. I am dropping right now into the chat the link to where I got all of these data points from. I encourage you, I will be sharing a number of data point websites throughout the presentation. And I encourage you to do some digging yourself, play around with the data. If you have any questions, please let us know. Even if it's after this webinar, we're always available to help you dive into some data pieces. If you can't find something that you're specifically looking for, we'd be happy to try hunting it down for you or putting you in contact with someone who would have that data. But briefly, going over where we are in terms of vaccines in Lake County, we're sitting and I did pull this data this morning, or I should say this afternoon. It was after the 12 o'clock hour of when they do update this information. So right now, we're sitting at 50.2% of Lake County residents who are fully vaccinated. That is slightly above actually the statewide vaccination rate of, it's like 49.7. So barely, but just a hair higher. So we're pretty on par when it comes to the state. Obviously, we could do way better, especially when we're looking at the vaccination rates by zip code. And I will say, this is, the zip code data is really what we use to track to see our progress. You know, you, you know, from the news, from social media, that there are certain communities that are not receiving the vaccination education and outreach that is needed to get them vaccinated. And our data points are showing that. I highlighted our highest and lowest zip code vaccination rates in the county, 46321, which is Munster. They're sitting at almost 70%. And then 46402, which is part of Gary, and they're sitting at 28.2%. So not even at that 30% mark. So we're, we're really focusing on those lower vaccination rate communities. They need the extra, the extra efforts. And like I said before, we're going door to door. We're having those meaningful conversations and that's what it's taking right now. We're, we're all starting to go in that, that right direction. Some communities are really moving faster than others. But we can use help in terms of getting that outreach done. Aubrey, you have a question?
Um, yeah, I did. I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I just had a quick question. I didn't know if you know the answer to this because I'm kind of curious. So I live in Crown Point, but I work in Chicago. So, but my employer vaccinated me for COVID. So I'm wondering if that counted for Illinois or if that counts for like Crown Point or like Indiana. I wonder how that works because I don't understand.
Yeah, that's a great question for state lines. I'm not too sure, but I can find that out for you. I can reach out to the health department. I, I do know there was originally some concern of individuals. For example, one of the women I work with, she got one vaccine in Illinois and one vaccine, her second dose in Indiana. And so there was some concern because those two entities don't talk to each other. At least at that point, they did not talk to each other. So she had her vaccine card, but other than that, there was no digital record of her getting vaccinated with both shots. So let me, I don't want to tell you the wrong answers. So let me jot that down and I will do some digging, okay?
It's really not like a big deal. I was just wondering about that because I, knowing how many nurses that I work with that live in Indiana, like, I'm thinking that number has to be higher than what it is probably. Anyway, it's not that important. It like, I mean, but I was just curious if you knew, but that's fine.
Yeah, that, that is a great question. I believe on the Indiana State Health website, it does say that it goes off of the address that they provided because you do have to show an ID to get the vaccine. But with you getting vaccinated in Illinois, I don't know if they record that differently.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, cool. Thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Yeah.
Okay, um, what was I saying? Oh, yes. So when, when looking at those zip code breakdowns, there is drastic differences with those data points. And, and with our Porter County friends, same website that you can go to, it is the state website and you can do the same exact thing for your county. Um, since we are focusing on school corporation COVID protocols, I did want to highlight now, we could spend all evening going through every school corporation's plan because they are all different. I don't think any one plan mirrors another. But I did want to provide a brief overview of what we're kind of working with in Lake County. By federal rule, masks are Um, by federal rule, masks are required for everyone on school buses. So every school corporation should be enforcing that masks are to be worn on all school buses. Um, Governor Holcomb did not issue a statewide ma- mask mandate, as we all are aware. Um, so he is leaving and he is stressing that he wants the officials at the local level to be making those decisions for their communities. Um, as of now, our countywide or there are have been, I know, um, Mayor Prince for Gary, he did take a, a, um, potential mandate to the council for classroom masking requirements. Um, I know there has been a few other communities where those local elected officials have voiced opinions. But on a countywide basis, other than showing support, um, there has not been any type of mandates for the classroom. So it is completely up to those school corporations and specifically those school boards at this moment. Um, with that, Lake County has fourteen public school districts. Um, out of those fourteen, six schools have mask requirements for everybody regardless of the age. Two of those schools, um, have mask requirements for the little ones, so K through sixth grade, those individuals who are not old enough yet to get vaccinated. And then there's another six schools who have no mask requirements at all. Um, they do have the recommendation, but they are not putting any requirements at this time into place. Um, you know, there are a lot of other points that go into each of these plans. It's not just about the masks. Um, but that was one piece that everyone talked about, um, in each of their plans. So I thought that was a good, a good point to make for all of the fourteen school districts. Um, I really encourage you, if you are interested, I pulled all of this information off each of the school corporations' websites this morning. Um, most of the school corporations, it's right on their homepage, whether it's just text on their homepage or they have a link. Um, so if you are interested in one specific school district or a school district that, you know, you don't have someone associated with, but you're just interested in what others are doing. I really encourage you to look at the different school districts. You could just Google it. Um, and the school corporation website will come up and it is for the most part fairly easy to find everyone's plans. Some are more extensive than others, including, you know, the cleaning protocols and cafeteria guidelines, that mixing of, of, of the recesses, things like that. Um, so there is a lot more into it. Also, most school corporations do have a COVID tracker on their website that it seems to be updated weekly. Um, many are using a Google sheet of some sort that they can easily update. And there's a link on the school corporations' website, so you can look at that to see how many cases on the school corporation is seen in a one week. Um, it also breaks down for teachers. I will say the one that stuck out to me the most, and that's why I want to say it because that's the only one I remember. Um, when I looked this morning on Tri Creek, which is the Lowell area. Um, Lowell High School currently has thirteen percent of their high school in quarantine. Um, so it is, it, it, which is alarming. Um, but that is something that can easily be, be pooled on every school district's page for the most part. If your school district that you're looking at does not have that on their website, reach out to them and ask them to do it. Um, unfortunately, it doesn't seem to be a requirement, um, but the majority of the school districts are doing it, so everyone should be doing it. Um, with that, the state also has a dashboard on that same link that I provided a few minutes ago for data. But once again, it is not a requirement, it does not seem, for the school corporations to participate. The article I looked at this morning, which was from, um, the previous day. It said nearly three hundred schools in the state have not submitted information for that dashboard. So it is not the most complete information, but at least to provide some sense. Now Linda did have a question and I want to make sure that I don't, um, forget about it. She asked a question about vaccination rights for children under the age of eighteen. So there's a fourteen year old girl who wants to get vaccinated, but her mother does not believe in vaccines. So right now, um, children for the Pfizer ages twelve, um, to that eighteen year old mark, they do need to have parental consent and there is a form that needs to be submitted. So unfortunately, um, she cannot go without a form being signed. So then I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, who's going to go over some more of those school board member responsibilities since right now those are the individuals that are making the decisions for our school corporations.
Thank you. And so just Miranda, you said there's fourteen public districts in Lake County, but as a whole, um, isn't there like twenty six or twenty four districts, including the privates and charters? Is that?
Um, so I mean, there's a, there's a total of what? Twenty seven high schools? I know that. Um, but I don't know the number of including charters that are not associated with um, a school district, a public school district.
That's okay. I was just curious because it just shows there's a lot going on. And this, Lake County is the second largest county and that's something that we always talk about when we talk about the, um, the voter data and, you know, engagement stuff with that. But it just shows that we have a lot of different types of school corporations and types of, and the needs. But we're focusing on now, um, schools that have school boards. Um, so I'm just going to quickly run through some responsibilities of a school board member. And I know some folks on here from Valparaiso have that interesting situation with some are, um, appointed to their school board. So anyhow, but, um, the, your school board members are nonpartisan. And just quickly, this says that a school board members, um, establish the vision and goals for a public school district. They address a wide array of issues from daily logistics of running the school to broader goals, um, to even outreach into the community. So one of the biggest things honestly is hiring and evaluating the superintendent. And you see that first on the list here, um, and then approving budgets, some setting spending, approving textbook, um, things, adopting annual curriculum in the school calendar, um, making decisions regarding opening and closing of schools. Um, and then working closely, uh, with the school and district leaders on schedules, supplies, safety, discipline, school resources, um, classroom resources, facilities and other issues. So, um, those are just some general overviews of what your school board member or members, um, should be doing now. I've heard other things like, um, you know, legislative liaisons. There's times when that school member may not always know as much as some of us know about advocacy and um, the bills that are happening down at the state house. So these are just kind of what the, their, um, their role is to encompass. And we're hoping to talk to you about what all of us could instill in them to, um, bring more to our communities. Oh yes, I get to continue talking, Amy. Um, so now the fun part of, um, we're just going to quickly talk about. I think a lot of people on this call have followed maybe the legislative session this past twenty twenty one. Why that was important? Because twenty twenty, we were in the middle of a pandemic, right? So, um, that hadn't happened for a hundred years, that we'd had something, a, a, you know, a health situation like this. Um, and then in twenty twenty one, um, Indiana has, uh, very short legislative sessions. If it's a long session, meaning from January to the end of April, we're crafting the budget in the long session. If it's a short session from January to about mid-March, that's just a legislative, um, session. So they're not doing anything financial in that, um, session. So this last past session, which ended at the end of April, I believe it was, was the budget year. Um, we were looking at some things and, and legislators found that they felt that, um, there was too much, you know, restriction coming from the top, from say the governor or other entities. And so they crafted bills. And the Senate Bill Five is all about who gets to decide, um, how these health mandates and other things are, um, are happening at the local level. So, um, it went into effect January, July first. But I just wanted to explain the, the sessions to you so that you understood. Um, when our legislators are in session, that's when we can kind of interact with them. We can interact with them all the time. But that's when they're crafting these bills and retooling them and, um, you know, getting them in shape how they want them. I will say that, um, just so that anyone on the call is or isn't aware, we have a, um, a super majority, which means the Republicans hold all the statewide offices, plus they have a super majority in the, um, House of Representatives and our Senate. So some of the things that you see and hear are because one side is, is pushing their agenda. So, um, we just wanted to, to make you aware of that. So this bill, um, I'll read it quickly, then I'm going to try to drop, drop in the chat when I have a minute. Um, actual language to the bill, if you're really super nerdy. Or maybe Bryce can do it for me because I know he can probably find it quickly, but I thought some people might want to, um, actually kind of see how this bill was crafted and where it came from. Um, but like I said, the legislators felt that, um, they wanted to allow for local legislative bodies, which would be your school boards or your county council to approve or disapprove of any health mandates from the local health department that are more stringent than the state. Um, the health department cannot implement health mandates, i.e. mask requirements or other things on their own. Proposed mandates must be brought to the council, voted on and approved by the council. Um, the health officer can release statements of guidance or support without approval from the council. So we know in Lake County ours has done that. Thank you Bryce for putting that link. I just thought some people might want to see how, where this bill came from and all of that. But that is why some, we're, we're just like, why before in twenty twenty, we're in the middle of this pandemic. We're hearing things from our governor. We're hearing things from our county health officials. And it was kind of happening in that pattern. Now, the state legislator, sl- slature has imposed this bill that, um, you know, the governor is not mandating something, so our, our county officials have to approve anything that's more stringent than what he has already, um, the governor has, um, stated. So, um, that said, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to, um, discuss that further or send you any more information. But that's why kind of we're in this conundrum now of, we're feeling an interesting little pinch. And I don't want to get into the weeds too much of why the schools are acting the way they are or why there's some differences there. But it has to do with what happened the last legislative session and then how we think and feel about the pandemic. Um, but it affects everybody. So, um, so yeah, that's this bill. I'd like you to learn more about it. Um, it is important to talk to your state legislators, so we'll, we'll mention how to contact them too. Um, but at this point, these things have been handed over to our county officials, our school board, our local officials. So even though this bill passed, you know, we can talk to them and say we're, we're our approval or disapproval of what they've done with this bill, but right now we want you to, we're going to talk to, we're going to encourage you to, um, reach out to the people that can kind of make a difference. So, or in a quicker speed. So.
And I do want to add quickly, um, I, I don't want you all to think that, um, the Lake County Health Department, the health officer, Dr. V, has not made any comments or anything. She has, she has publicly stated that, um, she is in favor and really recommends masks in schools and in public places. I'm also dropping a link to one of the newer Times articles. And I will also, um, Linda made a comment that it was hard to copy and paste the links that I'm putting into the chat. So if you are unable to do that, don't worry. I will be including everything in the follow-up email with the links attached to that email, so you can get all that information then. Um, but this article goes into, into a little bit more detail of what her process is needing to be. I do know, um, last week or the week before, she did try to bring together the health board. Um, and they were not able to make a quorum, so they could not move forward with the even voting process of their thoughts on, on some type of a mask mandate. Um, the next, um, council meeting for the county is on September fifteenth. Um, there is a chance they, they might be doing a special meeting specifically for this. That's what that article talks about. Um, so we will be following that. If there is some type of a special meeting specifically for the mask mandates, um, we will be sure to share that out, but that's a meeting that people can go to. Um, and so if that, if that does take place on September fifteenth, um, we encourage you to participate in it. We do share the, um, agendas prior to, as soon as we can. Usually it's just the day before when it gets posted. Um, but if we do happen to get it earlier than that, we do share that as soon as possible on the, um, on our website or on our social media links. I do want to say though, whatever, um, Dr. V puts into the council for voting, that would not include Gary or East Chicago, since they do both have their own health departments. But I do know both of those health departments have already, um, put into effect some form of, of mask guidelines and mandates. So moving forward.
Thank you for pointing that out because we, Lake County has so many interesting little intricacies. We had, and, and Hammond used to have a health department too, but now it's just East Chicago and Gary. So, um, and they've been great to work with and they've been, and being advocates of, of this work, but, um, thank you for pointing that out. And thank you to all of you that are participating in the chat. That's something I usually do on webinars. Um, so thank you for everything you're adding there. I'm trying to read, keep up on that too when I'm not speaking. So, um, it's a lot going on. Thank you. Yes. So what can these, what role can our local elected leaders, um, play and who should we talk to? Um, and Miranda's right, our health official in, um, our county person, Dr. V, she has spoken out. She has put out some guidance, um, but she can only do as much as she can because that's why we wanted to talk to you about that Senate bill. Um, so each county has a health department. I was recently on, um, the press, um, the press call that the, the state officials had with about COVID and they said there's ninety four health departments. And that's again, that's why we have East Chicago and Gary have their own. So they all kind of operate in their own fashion. That's kind of how our election, uh, offices operate too, interestingly. Um, but, um, those are people that you can reach out to too. Um, then we have our city. We have a, if you might have a mayor, if you live in a city, if you live in a town, you could have a, a town council president and your town council members. Um, those are people to get in touch with. Um, your, your county council. That actually is, um, at this point, that's who could be that deciding point on some of these things that at least in Lake County, our health official is, um, trying to put forward. So, um, we're going to encourage you to reach out to the county council, um, the county council members. And I'm not sure if we have our, their contact information in here, but if not, we can tell you exactly who they are. Um, there's five Democrats and two Republicans on the Lake County Council. Um, we strongly encourage you to get in contact with them because they could make some movement, um, and some health decisions. And then we have county commissioners in Lake County. We have three of those. Um, and they make all the decisions for various things, um, various purchases and, and money things, but especially how the county buildings are run. So if you ever come into the Lake County Government Center or any of the other, um, courts that they have in, in Hammond and Gary and such. Um, they have, we have a mask mandate there. So the, the county commissioners have put that in place for the staff and the visitors, the public to that building. Um, we, we mentioned earlier, your state representative, so you have a state representative and then you have a- Um we we mentioned earlier, your state representative, so you have a state representative and then you have a a state senator. Those are people that voted on the Senate Bill five, either for or against it, so you would probably want to. Reach out to them um about that, but right now, just to get anything moving is gonna be your county council or your school board. Um and then our governor. So like I said, in twenty twenty, um the governor was had some different kind of powers. Um about health and putting mandates out. So. That's why we're feeling differently about. He's putting some guidance out, but he hasn't said anything stronger and that. He did in the past, because he's restricted by some things. So. Um and also his political will. All these folks are elected and um except for our school board members. Um they are partisan, so they do have some sway to how they feel on specific issues. Um let us know if you need help finding who that person is, but I would strongly encourage you to use your voice um. Especially to your county health department, and then they'll probably encourage you hopefully to contact your county council. Um and your school board. So I think that's all from there.
And then I just want to mention, um and this was something Sarah and I talked about prior to this. Um meeting and just before Sarah gets into kind of those best practices. Um you know, I'm sure we have all been seeing the horrific video footage and comments being made. Towards school board members. Um and we do not condone that at all. Um we, there's a right way and a very wrong way to talk to a human being, you know. And at the end of the day, um while a lot of the the decisions that are being made across. Even the whole country, you know, a a lot of people don't agree with it. Um we need to make sure that things are being done the proper way. Um and regardless of people's views on on the decisions that are being made. The 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 attitudes and the horrific language that is being used at some of these. Even local school board meetings, it's it's not acceptable. Um and I I don't believe any of you on this call. Um would would be doing that by any means. Um but I thought it was very important for us to make that statement. That we do not condone um the inappropriate behavior to the school board members. Um. And so with that, I want to switch it over to Sarah to talk about how we can proactively have those conversations. With whether it's your school board members, since they are the ones that are currently making those decisions. But also those other elected officials that should be part of the decision-making.
Right. Thank you, Miranda. And that, and what she just said goes to the last slide too, with all who all those folks are. Um we would strongly encourage you to s- reach out to them in these ways that we're gonna talk about right now too. Um I thank you for mentioning that. There has been a lot of um tension and. We're gonna talk about best practices, which sometimes doesn't feel like maybe you're you're being heard. But um you know, hopefully we'll get to that and how we can strengthen our numbers and. And um be heard in other ways. So determine who's best to be contacting and learn about them, learn about their office. Maybe how long they've been in the office. Um sometimes that's hard, honestly, because. Like I know in Lake County, it's not always easy to know quickly who your elected official are is at the local level. So if you need something from us about who those people are, please do ask. We're happy to help. Um give their contact information or some simple information about them. That helps you just to get to know who you're interacting with. Um. Just like forming a relationship, you want to have a conversation with this person, whether you're writing or you're gonna go to a meeting and speak. Um you know, they can be a resource for you and give you information too. So. Just don't think of this as a one-time, like one-and-done thing, you know. What can you share from them? What can you learn from them? Um always make it personal. This is something like we talk about. I know it's easy to get into that data or want to share something from another state. But tell them why they should get to know you and who you are, where you live. It's very important. Um why this issue is important to you, any issue, whether it's about a COVID-related thing or something else you would like to advocate for. Um be specific, make sure you're clear on what you're talking about. Um sometimes I've seen people kind of talk about a lot of different things and then that gets confusing to the person. So try to stay very much on topic. Um make your knowledge of the topic known. So if you have specific things that have happened to you or your to your family members. Or um something that you would like to share, be very specific with that. And then connecting the issue back to yourself, I think I've kind of been saying that all along, but why do you care about this topic? Um share a personal story or something that can make this um. Not just data-driven, but why why they should care about this issue. And then there's a bit more, so stay tuned. Connect with your official, let's see, um using facts and statistics. And that's great, but we want to make sure that we've told our story too. But weaving in some of those facts too, sometimes there, there's a lot going on. So we want to keep our elected officials. Um up to date as possible, some things that you, they may or may not know. Um that is happening with a specific topic. And then it's really important, and we're gonna show you on the next slide too, to make your ask. Um I cannot be clearer about that. Sometimes we just want to tell our story or maybe gripe about something or make it a complaint. No, make sure you get to that point of what are you there to ask them for or to do? Or will they support? Um make sure you have that in your your speech or your writing. Um that's very, very important. Um and honestly, they're looking for that. Um show your passion, but be respectful. That's kind of what Miranda was talking about before we even started this part. Um I know a lot of people are are seeing a lot of things going on, but make sure to thank people also for their time. Or if someone, I wrote down on my notes, if someone votes in favor or you know they're gonna go your way, make sure to follow up with them and thank them. You know, they're getting a lot of heat on both sides or you know, this is a lot to keep up with. What whatever topic it is, make sure to follow up with um your local electeds and and thank them as much as you can. Um I think that's pretty much what I just said too, if you can follow up. Um if you've. Written an email or a letter, that's a good way to kind of know when I wrote them last, follow up within a week or two. Um if you haven't heard anything and kind of keep track of that, so that they know that you're not forgetting about them or your issue. And so, and we will give you, let's see. These handouts. Um. Rise has held in the past some writing letters to the editor workshops and writing op-eds. It was actually one of our first, before we even became Rise, we had some people interested in doing that. So. We created some handouts over over time. The first one has a hand. And this is kind of what I was walking you through. Make sure to tell who you are, what is your issue, why do you care? Um make sure to get to that ask, that's really important. And then thanking them. Um so these are just some that's got the tips and tricks all right there. We will provide you copies of this and and follow up. Um we have a digital form, we can share them out. So. Um just know that these are handy tricks, tips and tricks to share with everybody. Just me too. Okay. So I think I might have mentioned too. Um showing up at your board meetings or your council meetings, knowing when those things are happening. That's perfect, but we can't always attend those meetings in person. Writing, writing emails to our local electeds is important too. They might have a phone number, they might not, they might have a voicemail. That's not always the case um when they're at the local level. Um. But sometimes you want to be heard in different ways. So we strongly encourage writing letters to the editor, that's in your local paper. Each paper has um requirements though about how many words that can be accepted. So. Just look for that and we we do have some handouts on how to do that if you're interested or if you ever would like us to look over your. I've recently looked over people's emails before they've sent them off or um. Their letters to the editor or op-eds, we're happy to look those things over. And um give you support on that end. So Elizabeth sent us this one here, that's the clip of the newspaper this morning. Um it's a good idea to, if you get the paper, to read those sometimes, so that you can respond to them or know what people are saying. Um these are what people, you know, the papers have posted is what people are feeling. So um. That's, you know, if you want any more help, just know that we're here to help you on that.
And then for the other two items on the screen, I can quickly go over those. Um sharing facts on social media, we all know that um misinformation is such a big. Issue right now, especially around the vaccine. Um so. Even if you don't have a large following or if it's just family on your social media accounts, that's enough. Um because we all know how quickly things on social media can be shared and spread and others will see it and engage with it. Um as we mentioned in the beginning of this PowerPoint, that we encourage you to follow us on our Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. We post multiple times a day specifically on Facebook and we do fact-check everything. Um I also want to extend, just like Sarah said, if if you write something or you have. Kind of filled out your handy guide and you're gonna go meet with someone and you want to role-play with us, by all means, that's something we can help you with. We can set up a time and we can do that with you, but also on the social media side, if you see something that you're like, I don't know if this is correct or not. Send it to us. We'd be happy to look into it. We'd be happy to see if it's true or if it's only partially true or if it's completely inaccurate. Um you only know what you know and that doesn't make you a bad person. Um it just. Breaching out and and asking that question of, is this accurate? Um. Really makes you a great person. And it's it's not something to be embarrassed about or anything, because. I know there's times we look at things, not necessarily vaccine-related, but we look at things and we're like, wait a second, is. You know, is the how, it's it's hard sometimes to tell what is what is true and what is not. So we're there for you however you need us. Um another opportunity is to volunteer with us, going a little bit deeper into that, as I already mentioned. We have the canvassing opportunities, we have the commu- attending community events and tabling and things like that. Um and we kind of offer it in a twofold. If you want to attend things that we have set up already, that we're looking for volunteers. Great. Um if, but if you're wanting to stick with just your own community, even if it's a matter of, I want to go canvas. My subdivision. We can help you do that. We can get you the materials, we'll get you the script, we'll we'll get you everything you need. Um to make you comfortable and confident to do that, even if you want to stick within. A part of the county or even if you're not in Lake County, um we can still help you do that, because. COVID and the vaccines do not change based on where you're living right now. So so all of the information is still relevant. Um and and even if it's not something that we're necessarily organizing around. Um in a specific community right now, since we are focusing on more of the lower vaccination rate communities. Um that doesn't mean you cannot do it and we could still support you in doing that. And then Sarah, if you want to take this last slide.
What are some next steps that we can all work on? Um setting your goal, thinking about what you want to accomplish. Whether it's a big thing or something that you just want for your community. Um but do keep in mind what Miranda just said, you know, if it's COVID-related, that doesn't always. Doesn't stop at our zip code or our doorstep. So um working with our neighbors across county lines is really important. Um making a plan to achieve your goal. Who do you need to contact? Can you partner with others to achieve this goal? Um hopefully, we've given you tonight some people that are really important to. Contact, whether it's your school board or your count, I strongly encourage your county council. Um because of how that Senate bill is written, they kind of are that. That voice right now, if if you're working on something health-related, that they have to move on. Um do your research. So it's best to know that you're knowledgeable. Knowledgeable and you've made yourself more knowledgeable and then you you can be confident too. If you need any help, contact us. We are more than happy, both of us, to. Um look something up, look something over and let us know how we can help you achieve your goal, um big or small.
And then last but not least, um. I just wanted to share, and like I said before, I'll include all of these links in the follow-up email, but just a few website that sites that I really encourage you. To take a look at. The CDC website has a breakdown of um daily COVID. Um cases in the state, in the country, you could break it down by county. Um the one thing I really like about this data, while it does differ a hair from our county. Or our state data, um same data information, just different levels of the rankings. Of the color coding and the timeframes, which is why I like the CDC data. They do a seven-day running average um and they update that daily. So you will always be seeing the previous seven days of what you're looking at. Whereas the state website, like I said, same data, I don't want people to think that the CDC has different data than the state of Indiana does for the state. Um but their seven-day average is only updated once a week, so you're seeing a week behind. Um of what's really going on. So the CDC does have a better up-to-date capture of COVID data. Um they also have the vaccination rates by county and the state. You cannot break it down by zip code on the CDC website, but you can do that on the state health department website, which is the rshot.in.gov. Um similar to the CDC, they do have a daily update on positivity rate for the county Monday through Friday. They have the seven-day average, like I mentioned, it's updated weekly. They do have that school positivity rate. Um that I mentioned earlier, they have a a school-specific dashboard. Um it is only updated once a week, I believe on Mondays, but it is still a snapshot that you can look at for the schools that are participating. It also shows the number of schools that are not participating in it, so you can get a better picture. And then you could also break those vaccination rates by county or zip code, like we showed you on the presentation earlier. Um and then finally, our website, so rshot219.com, we try to make it as localized as possible. We have a variety of resource links. The big piece that I really want you to take away, we have a share your story section. Um which I'll be sure to highlight on the follow-up email, but you could upload a video um and we give you very simple ways of how to do that. Or you can upload a quote and a photo, um sharing your story, whether it's how has COVID impacted you? What are you most excited for once, once this COVID thing is finally gone? Um why did you get the shot? Why do you encourage others to get the shot? We're utilizing these stories. Um to encourage others. Um on our website, we also have the testing location map and the vaccine clinic location map. Um which are widgets that we borrowed from the state health department, so it does update. As the state health department updates there, so it is accurate information. And then with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and I know we are over on time and I thank you so much for staying with us. Um since we did not have a chance to have open conversation, I am, Sarah, I hope you. I hope you don't mind, because I'm gonna make this decision on my own. Um I'm going to include. A short doodle poll of maybe some proposed dates. If this group would like to reconvene, just to have kind of an open discussion. We can also open it up to anyone else that registered for the meeting that was unable to participate tonight. Um and maybe we can get together within the next week or so, just to have that nice conversation of network sharing. Um and and just what we want to achieve and how we can all help each other.
Sounds good to me. I know we've been seeing a lot out there and we didn't really delve into the whole. I've had some people contact me and they want to take it to the next level, because they kind of see the. For lack of better terms, they see the other side doing some things like um purchasing signs or what have you. Um we wanted to present tonight some things that are known to be best practices and can be effective. And who the right people are to talk to and how to speak to them or how to write to them effectively. Um we're not saying that you can't do some of those other things. Um, we're not saying that you can't do some of those other things that you see as, um, strategizing, organizing, and that's, that's great. But our local elected officials need to hear from you on these things that you're concerned about. And so, um, we just encourage you, you know, if you want to talk about some more of that with us, you know, I've seen some things going on that could be strategic. But, um, tonight's presentation was mostly about who to contact and some unknown. There's some things that we're not sure about. When Miranda and I were preparing for today, I know I reached out to Kristin and said, I don't, I'm not really sure if the schools have to report on A, B, C, or D. There's some things happening in this new school year that are a little, um, different than last school year. So we're trying to figure out what's required and who's, who's the person to report to. And I know some folks in my hometown have said, um, oh, they used to send these awesome helpful emails all the time about, um, how many cases there were or how many kids were in quarantine or, or about other things, and they're not doing that this year. So please, please, if there's something that happened in the past that you're not seeing now, um, or you see another district doing that you would like to implement in your area, tell them and say, you know, this was awesome. We need to continue it because, um, and, and follow through with all the things that we've told you. But I just wanted to give those personal examples because, um, there's so much more to talk about. And I'd love to answer, you know, chat about the things in the, in the chat that you've all shared. But I think a lot of people know the, how to contact me, so I'm more than happy to chat with you, um, in other ways. And I will stop talking, but, um, there's, there's just so much to talk about with this conversation.
Great. And with that, um, I hope you all enjoy your evening and please be on the lookout for my email. Um, I am hoping to get the recording all put together and on YouTube tomorrow. So then by Thursday, I can get that email out to all of you. And with that, I hope you all have a great night and we will talk soon.